Called this meeting to order, this is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today's Monday, September 11th, 2017, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were just a few items in the table file.
Yeah, this evening's table file, we have an updated State of the District narrative, which is some minor adjustments to some data. We have an updated middle school site improvement plan to share the data from some of the goals that we couldn't share with you because of the embargo of the MCE data at the time that they presented. And of course, we have some personnel appointments, increased, decreased, change in assignment, and we have the first enrollment report of the year.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your package minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, August 28th, 2017. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Any questions or comments regarding the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, August 28th, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements and recognition, Dr. Hillman.
Yes, I just have one announcement this evening and one recognition. First is the Greenville Park Community School Report to the Community. This fine piece of information that you got here this evening was completed this month, and the report details the results of the third year of community school programming at Greenville Park. The report is in the process of being mailed to all Greenville Park families and all households within one mile of Greenville Park Elementary School, and all families with preschool children living in the Greenville Park attendance boundaries, and also local real estate agents. So, a lot of people getting this very nice annual report with some great news inside, and we really want to thank everyone who assisted in the report's compilation, and of course, to our friends at Newger Communications for their design work. So that is the announcement. And then, this evening, I am going to ask the board and those present to observe a moment of silence here as we remember all the Americans who lost their lives on September 11th, 2001. We want to remember the families and friends of the victims, as well as they continue to grieve the loss of their loved ones 16 years later, and I think we know that it has really impacted, it changed our nation forever that day. I think it's our duty to remember it on this day. So I'm just going to ask us to observe a moment of silence. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do board members have any announcements or recognitions? Okay, so with that, we will move on to our first item for discussion and report. We have tonight with us Erin Bailey, Community Services Director, and she will present the Community Services Site Improvement Plan to the board.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me be here tonight to present the Community Services Site Improvement Plan. You are all familiar with what Community Services does, but just wanted to share and remind everyone that Community Services really is about bringing the community together. We are in the business of supporting adults and children in their learning and participation throughout the community, and provide access for citizen involvement, access to community school and community resources, and promotion of collaboration and partnerships. So we'll just jump right into some of our, a review of what our goals were for the 2016-17 school year. We had three goals. The first was around the Northfield Promise, and that was really to expand and enhance the work of that initiative that focuses on supporting all Northfield youth from cradle to career. Our second goal was to determine appropriate space and programming needs for Community Services programs. And our third was to expand and enhance professional development for all Community Services staff. This graph then that I have out there is tied into our first benchmark from last year. Community Services is heavily involved in the Northfield Promise in many areas, but quite heavily involved in the Ready for Kindergarten Action Team. We do facilitate and chair that action team. And so each year, as part of Ready, Set, Go Day, we have been administering surveys to the kindergarten families, and to better understand what these children are having for experiences prior to entering kindergarten. So I wanted to share a little bit of data from that. This is from last year. We did just give this at Ready, Set, Go Day, but don't quite have the results yet. So wanted to share, we did have an 82% completion rate last year, so we had 221 responses. And this just gives you the breakdown of where children spent time. And as you can see, it was just if they spent time in multiple locations, so if they spent time at a preschool and a daycare, it only, we're only counting the school they listed first. What this does represent is that 88% of children of last year's kindergarten class spent some time being cared for outside their home. This graph, then, one of the things we try to do with the information that we get each year is kind of dig further into our data. And so one of the things that we did for the first time last year was then, once we knew those hours that were spent either in preschool or daycare outside of home, is we then broke it down by FRP and non-FRP and the hours of the children were spending outside of the home, really to help us determine what supports are needed, who potentially needs more or less hours outside the home for childcare or daycare, and then where we can apply those additional resources. So that, this was certainly one of our key reflections out of the, out of last year's site improvement plan. We have used this data when we have our regularly scheduled kindergarten and pre-kindergarten staff meetings, and this is certainly driving the work that is happening in the Ready for Kindergarten Action Team, but also certainly the work that then is that happening as part of the Community Services Division. So some of our other key reflections from last year, Northfield Promise, I think, has become quite well-established in the Northfield community, and so you will notice this year we're going to start to back away from that being one of our main goals. Not that we won't continue to do the work, but I think that we, now it is so ingrained in our department, it doesn't need to be spelled out in the site improvement plan anymore. I shared the second point, just how valuable this information that we are gathering from these kindergarten surveys is and continues to be. Other key reflections, we continue to see growth and success at the Greenville Park Community School. You have the annual report in front of you. It shares a lot of the highlights from last year. Because of the success of the first three years, we have received fundings for year four and five, and so are happy to continue the work there. We continue to see some space challenges within the Community Services program. This is especially true at Longfellow, which you are all aware of as well, as we continue to look at how best to serve our youngest learners. We've also done this past, last year, intentional outreach efforts that were taking place, and this was especially true at the library through our ECFE program. Superintendent Hillman has been sending out the birthday cards when children are born within this district to help also encourage them to then come and attend an ECFE class. And we also had 46 students at Hand in Hand preschool last year attend, receiving some sort of scholarship. So our preschool is full at 144 students, and some of those are special education students. Every classroom of 18 has slots for six special education students in our integrated preschool. So we are serving a large number of students in preschool that are receiving some scholarship, which is certainly part of our outreach effort. And then, sorry, my last bullet is slightly cut off, but staff at all levels also appreciated our intentional focus last year on making sure that staff development was happening, especially in those areas that is not necessarily have as much time for that, that being our early ventures program, which is our licensed birth to five talk to your center, and a lot of our out-of-school time programming. Those are the areas we focused on last year, making sure they received some very intentional professional development. So our site improvement plan goals for this current year, as you'll see, two have remained the same, and then we have a new, the third one being new. The first two that remain the same were again, to determine appropriate space and programming needs for Community Services programs. The second one would be to expand and enhance the professional development opportunities for Community Services staff. And the third one, and the new one, is to expand and enhance outreach efforts to community members to access the Community Services programs and services. So this slide looks a little different than the school buildings do in that we don't have, there's not a assessment that we're going to take for the MCE test scores. So some of, this is the work that we will be doing to help meet those goals. And so we will increase our focus on STEAM. We are doing this actually starting in our early childhood programming. If you're over at the NCRC at any time in the near future, we've added an outdoor educational space for our ECFE programs, and it's well worth a stop to see. And then also, we've, the outdoor education and purchasing of curriculum for early childhood programs. Last year, as you probably saw in the narrative, we reviewed seven different curricula for birth to five, and so going forward with that. We are also going to provide the training necessary to comply with the recent legislation in the Health and Human Services Bill to continue to take, serve families receiving childcare assistance program, which are the C cap dollars provided by the county. In a very late addition to this bill, there was some language in there that now requires us some, some pretty extensive training in order to keep receiving C cap funds. And this, these changes have a lot to do with how we onboard employees around their background checks and the new regulations there that are pretty stringent, but we feel pretty committed in that we, as one of the only out-of-school time providers that are taking C cap funds, need to continue to serve families who need childcare options. And so we will be going forward with this. It's taking a lot of help too from our Human Resources Department to kind of make sure we're meeting all of these requirements. We will then provide, continue to provide ongoing support and professional development opportunities for all staff. The Community Services Division is busy all year round, so we, in the summer, do not slow down. And so one of the things we are going to focus on this year is making sure that the core leadership team from Community Services has some professional development time among ourselves. So we'll be doing a couple of half-day retreats in order to kind of spend that time together that doesn't always happen because of the year-round nature of our department. We'll also then continue to have our emphasis on early childhood areas too, in that professional development. We're then going to expand and enhance our home visits and early childhood programs. As we know, this is an area we want to continue to build relationships in for as the district. Matt speaks to this often about closing the achievement gap prior to entering school, and we do feel strongly that this is an area we want to continue to look at about making, building those strong relationships with families before they enter kindergarten or any school. And then we'll increase our participation numbers in free and reduced price lunch programming is another thing we will continue to look at.
So with that, I would take any questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Board members, questions, comments? Margaret?
We didn't know if ours was the one doing the screeching, so we pushed it along.
Sorry.
Erin, as always, everything Community Services does is so impressive, especially this, the community school has just really been an amazing addition since day one. So kudos for that. As I was reading through your information earlier, I read about all the space challenges. And what I'd like to know from you is, if the bond passes and we were able to convert Greenville Park to an early childhood facility, would that do the trick?
Yes, that would do the trick. So we, when I, I can, you know, I can tell you how many classrooms we have currently between our two spaces, primarily being Longfellow and the NCRC, and it would more than double the number of classrooms that we do have available over there. So that would certainly. Aid greatly in that. We also, you know, the other program that's associated with that move is our Adult Basic Education Program. And we've, for a long time, offered a class on Wednesday mornings at Greenville Park. It's one of our most popular adult basic education classes, but Greenville Park is also for us. So AMEAAS Church has been gracious enough to host that class for this year, but that would be another program that we are currently offering offsite just because of space issues within the district.
So if we had more space, you could potentially take in more children in Hand in Hand preschool, et cetera?
Correct. Hand in Hand preschool, early ventures, our early childhood special education areas where we are currently either experiencing a very great shortness on space, or even actually at to the point where we're outsourcing some to other areas in town.
Okay. Thank you.
Commander, I'd just like to add a couple pieces to that. If you think of the current Greenville Park building as a Community Services building that would be inclusive of Hand in Hand preschool, we haven't even talked yet about early childhood family education. If I think about young parents who have some kids in preschool and some kids not in preschool yet, I'm splitting my time right now between two different facilities. And having my oldest two children 22 months apart, I know how difficult that was to make sure you could get to preschool, and even when it was in the same building. And so I think that that's a huge advantage. And if you think about the opportunities for Community Services to expand beyond the traditional evening kinds of things, you'd have a building that has a full competition-sized gym, a messy room, you know, in terms of an art room, a number of, so if you think about not just the things that would do to, I believe, really give us the tools to help close the achievement gap before it starts, but would also give us the chance to expand other Community Services programming in a way that I can think of only very few districts who are able to do it in that way.
That's correct. We have families who would, I believe, probably if their child was in the Hand in Hand preschool because they apparently, they would attend ECFE the entire time their child was in Hand in Hand preschool with their other child, we just don't have the capability of doing that right now.
Thank you.
Excellent question. Other questions? Ellen?
So I also had a similar question because of the goals on space, and then goals on space again this year. Is Community Services is driven by the participants in terms of what you can do, and, you know, it's a little bit different than the school district in terms of funding. So with the space constraints, are you feeling like right now it's limiting not just the programming piece, but also is it causing any sort of financial strain? Because if you don't have the spaces, you can't offer the programs that bring the participants in that pay?
Well, to some level, we limit our staffing to what we are able to serve. So in some level, we're not at that, to the point where we're not being able to make our financial goals because of that, because we, we limit what we staff for because we are limited on this, on the space. I mean, I can tell you in our Hand in Hand preschool, we were in a three-year-old class full before summer started.
Wow.
And then in, so for a three-year-old, if you're looking to get in, and the entire Hand in Hand preschool is full about mid-August today. So that's where we would say, could we potentially accommodate more with more space? Absolutely, I would say. We don't, we haven't hired another teacher because there's nowhere to place another teacher.
Great. Follow-up question. Other questions or comments board members have? Amy?
Hi. I have the great pleasure of working on your committee, so I know a lot of the, I already answered lots of questions for me, but would a new building, would all of your, all of your activities be housed in the new building, including the Community Services, you know, community education, and would all get?
Sure. So Amy's had the joy of hearing this presentation twice, so thank you for doing that so graciously. So part of the nature of Community Services program is to some degree, it's always going to be out in buildings, it's always going to be out in the community. Things, you know, we run school-age childcare at every building, we're going to run programs at night in some other buildings, in gyms and other places. But to be able to house, some of our kind of recreation enrichment programs could certainly be housed onsite, then we would have a gym and some other classroom spaces. But this building would also really bring together all of our early childhood programming, especially in our staff. So we have staff right now that spend a lot of time traveling back and forth between the Northfield Community Resource Center and Longfellow, sometimes several times a day. So this would bring together those pieces of our programming, so we'd be looking at the early childhood programming, adult basic education, and then all the offices of Community Services in one spot. But some of those other programs would continue to happen throughout the district.
So how many, we're consolidating how many different locations into one?
Primarily two. Primarily the Northfield Community Resource Center and then Longfellow.
And but AMEAAS as well?
Yes. So I'm saying primarily two because some of these are offshooting a bit this year, just because of constraints.
And can I go on?
Absolutely.
So I have to say, I mean, early childhood family education was a huge part of my life. I moved to Northfield with a toddler, and it was my way of integrating into the community. And I, I was very active in it while she was the right ages. And when I heard you talking about the birthday cards, I was wondering if you've ever thought of trying to reach out specifically to people who are moving to town? And I'm not sure how you do that, but I'm just throwing that out there while it's on my mind.
Yes.
And to get those people involved as well.
So we hope to some degree that we're catching some of those people that are new to town by our brochure, which is mailed to everyone who lives in the Northfield Public School District. So however long you've lived in the community, you're going to receive that brochure. We also have it in the welcome wagon, so if you're a recipient of that, as you are new to town, they're dropped in almost every, the brochure is dropped in almost every business in town. And in that brochure, you know, we have different times that we have kind of open houses for programs throughout the year. So ECFE every, every semester has an open house that if you're new to the community and you just want to try it, you can. And we also have that opportunity just to come drop in and try a class throughout the year.
Excellent. Other questions or comments?
I have a couple questions. First of all, I just want to dovetail off what Margaret said. I mean, it's just amazing, and I think one thing that you do so well is creative and innovative programming, and you really harness the resources of the community. For example, the St. Olaf harnessing the energy and talent of our St. Olaf students to do a creativity project for Kid Ventures. I mean, things like that in a library program, and it's just, it's truly excellent. So my one question, you had talked about, you had done some work around our facility use, which we understand is, you know, is accessed often, and to a great extent to its maximum capacity typically. And so you talked about surveying 36 districts around facility use field, fees, et cetera, policy. Were fees adjusted after that survey of the other districts, and if so, how?
Sure. So fees were not, we have taken a kind of a two-pronged approach to facility, kind of reviewing our facility policies. So this summer, we spent time, all the administrators gathered to review some of our internal policies, and some of the policies that there may be situations that have come up in the last seven years. So things have happened that aren't necessarily addressed anywhere, and we just need a procedure for it. So we actually didn't change any, we just looked at procedures to make sure we had the same procedures happening at every building, and that we, everyone was clear what those, clear and comfortable with what those procedures are. We did start, we did start and finish that review of the 36 communities, and so we reviewed everything from their facility use policy, their fees, their energy structure, their websites, how you book a permit. So that is now our goal for this next year, is to kind of review the cost structures we have in place, review the policy we have in place, and bring forth any changes we might see then.
Excellent. Sounds like a very comprehensive process, so.
So that'll be good. My other question then was the 46 Hand in Hand students receiving scholarship. Do you have a waiting list for scholarships currently?
For this current year? Is that what, are you asking about this current?
Yes, yes, if there's currently a waiting list.
So you're, you're asking a tough question at the moment. So all of Pathway One scholarships for this count, this region have been put on a waitlist at the moment. So it's a little difficult for me to answer that question. We are holding all of students who are on scholarship right now and haven't placed them internally on Pathway One, Pathway Two, our own school readiness dollars, because ideally we will want some to go on Pathway One scholarships, but they have, we, no one in this area has heard that every family has received a waitlist letter. So that will greatly impact when we do run out of scholarship dollars, because that, last year, we had, I believe, around $20,000 worth of scholarships that were funded by Pathway One, and if there is not that amount of dollars available, we will certainly use some of our school readiness dollars to the best we can.
Can you just remind us quickly the difference between Pathway One and Two? I always try to keep it straight, but they were quite decent.
Pathway One is awarded to the family, and so families apply, they send it in, and the scholarship is awarded to the family. The family then can take those dollars and use them at any three or four-star rated preschool. Pathway Two is scholarships awarded to the organization, and so that is the $52,500 we as a, as a school district receive, and then we are able to administer those scholarships as we wish to families who qualify.
Okay, great. And then my last question, you touched on the necessary training, et cetera, to comply with the, some of the childcare assistance. Do you anticipate that's going to not only be, sounds like an onerous effort, but is it going to also be somewhat costly to be able to adhere to the guidelines?
Yes, potentially. So the biggest kind of change that would happen in this legislation is they are requiring an FBI fingerprint and background, fingerprint and photograph background check. And so even if this, even if a staff member worked from eight to three with, with the same students they would work with then after school, they still would have to go through this separate fingerprint and photograph background check process. What we are waiting to receive is if we can have some understanding of what they're checking and making sure that those databases are the same databases we would be checking as a school district, thus being able to use that as their school district background check for all programs that they would work for. However, that is still more costly than what it costs for what we run through the school district alone.
Okay. All right, thank you. Well, I think, thank you very much.
Yes.
Again, this is always one of the highlights of the, of our site improvement plans is always here in Community Service, because it's a little bit different than our other buildings, and always highlights many successes, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So our next item for discussion, Dr. Hillman, will be presenting the State of the District Celebration and Challenges. And just as a reminder, the one cover sheet, there was a few corrections made, so there was a new cover sheet placed in your table file.
Good evening, and it's my pleasure to share with you a Northfield School Board tradition of hearing the annual State of the District presentation. And this year, we're looking, of course, at the celebrations and challenges. We look backward a year and look at things that we are particularly proud of. Now, of course, I try to keep it to a reasonable list. Many of you who know me know that I could probably have tripled the things that we're proud of, but, you know, I try to make sure that we're looking at a reasonable number of things to celebrate. And then just to clarify too, for the folks at home, when we say challenges, we don't mean that they're necessarily things that are bad, they're just things that are coming up that we know are going to challenge our ability to achieve the goal, some more so than others. And I have 13 or 14 of those for you to be prognosticating as we move forward for this year. So I'm really pleased to go ahead and start with talking about our vision statement, which is so important. And the software that I use wouldn't allow me to underline every, which of course, you know, is really an important piece here, but it is really true. "We will prepare every student for lifelong success within a world-class learning environment with a commitment to community partnerships and sustainability." That's the vision statement that we adopted last fall after a rigorous strategic planning process, which I'll reference through the presentation. And if you recall, that word "every" was very important, because we talked about using "all," and "all" thinks about kids and our students as this collective group, which is important, but we know that the relationships that we develop with students is essential, and so "every" is the singular, the individual, and it really emphasizes that we look at every child as distinctly unique. And we're trying to make sure that we connect with every one of them as opposed to "all." I know it's a grammar kind of piece, but it's really important, and it actually really guides my work every day, "every" versus "all." So let's talk a little bit about our teaching and learning celebrations for this year. We're really pleased to continue implementing the state mandated "world's best workforce" and identifying our alignment with Northfield Promise. You just heard our Community Services presentation, and you know that Northfield Promise really, it couldn't have been a match better made between "world's best workforce" and "Northfield Promise." It was really done by accident, but we'll take a happy accident any day, right? So we continue to work hard to go after those pieces that are in the "world's best workforce" and also align with the Northfield Promise approach as well. I'm also incredibly proud of the way that we prepare students for key transitions. When you think about our Bridges to Kindergarten program, when you think about our sixth-grade web, Where Everyone Belongs program, and our ninth-grade LINK program, we really emphasize and understand the research behind making sure that we have extra support for kids at key transitions in their school career. And every year, I hear from parents from all three of those programs, and I hear from kids in all three of those programs, and they, they just really value them. People really appreciate the approach that we have to transitions. Northfield School District, on average, continues to outperform the state average in all Minnesota comprehensive assessment examinations. And again, we're always pleased to report our performance on advanced placement examinations. And last year, of the 356 advanced placements tests taken at Northfield High School, 84% of them earned scores that resulted in students qualifying for college. in students qualifying for college credit. You heard the great news that came out of Minnesota last week. As a state for the American College Test, or the ACT, of the 17 states in the nation that have every student in the state take the ACT, Minnesota came out number one. And so when we think of, not only while we're not number one, when we look across the entire nation, but remember that 33 states don't require every student to take the ACT. So when you're comparing apples to apples, and states that require everybody to take the ACT, Minnesota comes out number one. And in Northfield, with an average composite score of 22.6, we best the state average, which is the best in the nation, by 1.1 composite points. And 1.1 composite points is a pretty big deal, in my opinion, in that scale. So we're very, while we're very pleased with our students' performances on these standardized assessments, we also recognize that they're just one measure of their overall success. While they're important, it doesn't tell every student's entire story. I also wanted to mention at this point that, once again, we're very pleased to announce that we, well, you know it from last year, that we had four National Merit finalists last year and six National Merit commended scholars. So very pleased with that as well, which, of course, results from work, some work with the PSAT and the SAT. You know, it was a year last year of recognition all the way around. It seems every year, we can recognize some of our staff members as being identified as top in their field. And again, the photo that you see here is none other than Sarah Swan McDonald, who was a Minnesota Teacher of the Year finalist. That's the second year in a row that Northfield Public Schools has had one of our own teachers in the final 11 of the Minnesota Teacher of the Year program. That's a pretty big deal. Nancy Antoine, the principal at Bridgewater Elementary, was named one of three finalists for Minnesota's National Distinguished Principal Award. I'm going to skip to the last point here, which was that our Northfield High School, or our Northfield Orchestra program, overall, the fourth through 12th grade program, was recognized as the Orchestra Directors Association Outstanding Program of the Year. And so really great, it's the actual acronym, it's Meritorious Program of the Year. And again, so pleased with our orchestra in grades four through 12. And just the, you've attended concerts, you know, it's just, it is truly amazing music what they produce. And if you have not had a chance to go to a concert, go, they're free, for the most part, and it's a real treat. And of course, in teaching and learning, we're really thrilled that the Second Step Social Emotional Learning Curriculum is being implemented as we speak this week. The first lessons, I understand, are going to be starting to happen across the district in grades kindergarten through eighth grade. And of course, when we talk about SEL, as well, later, I'll talk about some of the challenges that we face this year as well. So let's talk about raider activities. This is one of the updates that we actually upticked by 1.8 percentage points this year over last year. So 76.8% of Northfield High School students participated in raider activities through athletics, drama, music, or other program. And I think that extra 1.8% is probably due to this, Rock and Roll Revival, because you all know that we sold out, I think, eight performances last year in a theater that seats 750 people or so. So again, Rock and Roll Revival, one of those treasured activities that we have in Northfield. But when you think about 76.8% of kids at the high school, you know, more than one, more than three in every four are participating in something after-school. And there's a lot of evidence that suggests when students participate or have a connection to their school in some extracurricular way, that that is a super positive thing for them and has tremendous effect on other outcomes as well. Now, we know that activities, the best part of activities is your participation. While the win-loss record might be more important to some folks than others, we know just by being there, it's a huge piece. But we also want to say that when we celebrate, that we had multiple teams advance to the state tournament. In fact, the boys' hockey team for the first time in history, the girls' hockey team for the second year in a row, and a number of other programs that went to the state tournament, boys' soccer, that, of course, lost in overtime in the state championship game. So you think about that, you think about of all the individuals who have gone to state, not only in athletics, but also in co-curricular activities such as speech and other things, there really is a lot of activities for students, and we're really proud of that. We're also very proud of having three student representatives join our District Education Program Advisory Committee, DPAC. And again, working very hard, and I see our DYJ students here tonight, working very hard to make sure we continue to amplify our student voice. We also hosted the first Northfield Grad Summit that drew 175 people. This was put on by the Northfield Promise Career and College Ready Action Team, led by Mark Enzrood and Michael O'Keefe from the district. And again, talking about equitable support for all career and college pathways, something, you know, that we're very passionate about. And TORCH is the program that needs no introduction, but you also need to know that 432 students were served in grades six through 12 in TORCH last year, as well as we provided service to get this, 164 alumni. So students who had graduated and had contact with TORCH, we're not just providing them support here while they're in school, but that community group is providing support as they transition into a post-secondary experience. We also want to point out another successful career technical trades career fair. And I know many of you have had a chance to go to that in May. Again, several dozen businesses and organizations participating, giving especially middle school kids a lot of exposure to different kinds of career and other kinds of pathways. We are also very proud of the continued work that we have toward customized learning in terms of trying to help find students' passion. We do this in a number of ways, but we continue our customized learning through our one-to-one tablet program. All students in grades four through 12 have their own device, tablet device, and K3 classrooms were, had about one tablet for two students. And the picture's a little bit faded here, but you could probably see it in your packet, that this is a piece from the Bridgewater Steam Carts, in terms of stop-motion video. And again, trying to go beyond just the kinds of things that can be measured with a standardized assessment in terms of that hands-on and application of learning, and what is that spark for students that gets them thinking about what can't they do, not what, just can they, but what can't they do in terms of being excited that there are no boundaries for them. And of course, we are very proud to continue a job embedded professional development for our teaching staff through weekly professional learning communities. And we know that PLCs really are the place where reform and change and continuous improvement happens the most, when it's teachers who are given intentional time to sit and discuss the students they have, the teaching techniques that they have used to address the standards, and then the outcomes that they are having in terms of their goals, and what do they need to do next to continue that continuous improvement journey. The Board of Education had another great year, and I'm really pleased to talk about the strategic plan with 186 people who participated, and a new vision statement, and new short-term and near, or near-term and ongoing priorities. We also approved the Master Facilities Plan after a more than two-year, very rigorous process. And you adopted that last November. And of course, we know that we have a question on the ballot in November 7th to help us take a real big swing at that Master Facilities Plan. And that Master Facilities Plan, again, I'm very proud of that process. It literally involved hundreds of stakeholders over more than two dozen meetings. And then that goes to the next piece, too, with thought exchange. We had more than 570 people participate in the facilities-focused thought exchange the year before, and we continue to use thought exchange. We did one conversation last year, and 799 people continued to participate and give us their thoughts about the school district. We believe that we continue to have successful community partnerships through things like Northfield Promise and the Chamber of Commerce as evidence of that. And finally, we were very thrilled to complete the onerous process of being re-upped as a charter school authorizer by the Minnesota Department of Education, one of only three public school districts in Minnesota that have maintained our status as a charter school authorizer. And so we thank the board for their support. In fact, I'm going to visit with both Prairie Creek and the Arcadia Board in the next couple of months here. You know, it's anticlimactic with community services, because you just heard the annual school improvement plan. But you have the community school report. When you look at all of the numbers, over about 1,100 students per, or 1,100 total people participated. That would be students, Greenville Park students, middle school or high school students, family members and teachers. So you think more than 1,100 people participated in at least one activity at the Greenville Park Community School. That's a lot of people who are coming and really participating in that. And that's one of the reasons it's been so successful. More than 40,000 children, youth, and adults participated in at least one community services program. It's a duplicate count, but it's the best way we can give you those numbers. Over 120,000 people had access to a school district facility through community services. And again, that's a duplicated count. Ventures programs served 754 students in 2016, '17. And we received two-year grant funding, 24 of the Pathway Two Early Learning Scholarships that Erin just mentioned in her presentation. And finally, I think it's at the second or third year now that we have received a Minnesota Community Education Association Award, a program award. And if you remember, it was for the El Superbarrio Radio Program on KYMN, the most recent iteration of that. Is that two or three years?
The second one.
Okay, second in a row. So again, the community services division being recognized for their outstanding work in terms of reaching out to the community. When we think about the district services, we conducted a successful search process resulting in Mr. Sam Richardson's selection as Greenville Park Elementary School principal. We celebrated District Grounds Coordinator Tracy Clausen's election as the president of the Minnesota Park and Sports Turf Managers Association. And a lot of the work that Tracy and his team do go unnoticed unless something goes wrong, right? And so what I really appreciate about this particular award is that it goes to show, no matter what part of the district you're in, no matter how you serve, we are asking our leaders to also step forward and take leadership roles at the state level. We think that that's important. We get to hear other things from how things are going throughout the state and other areas. And the Minnesota Park and Sports Turf Association with Managers Association with Tracy Clausen being elected the president, we're proud of Tracy for that. We continue our Farm to School initiative, as you know, in terms of child nutrition. Our fiscal health continues to be well done in the fact that we continue to expand our unassigned fund balance, again, and again, another crispy, clean audit, thanks to Val Murdestorf and the Finance Department. And again, we, once again, won the MDE School Finance Award. And our Human Resources Department Negotiations Team completed not contract negotiations or meet-and-confer processes in 2016, '17 with 15 different employment groups. So you think about, in one year, we work with the teachers. And again, we just recently approved a settlement for the 2017-19 contract. We'll celebrate that next year. But in the off-year, in the other year, 15 groups. And that's a lot of stuff to keep track of. And so when we think about the HR and Finance Departments and the Negotiations Team doing that, we're very proud of their work, making sure that we can recruit and retain the best people possible. And finally, for celebrations, we are pleased that we were able to take partial lead in implementing the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative and successfully hired its executive director right out from our own organization. So Lynn Kromenga, our former Assistant Director of Special Education, was hired as the first executive director of the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative, and is the host district at the time. Of course, we ran that search. We also helped, in just one year, SEVSEC transition to its own administration. And if you think about that, we always knew that was going to happen. Last year, it was one of the challenges, if you remember. And in one year, we helped that group transition to be self-governing. And so I want to thank Margaret Clangell, who serves as the Northfield Board Rep on SEVSEC, but really pleased with the work that, and there was a lot of learning and a lot of challenge that went through that. But SEVSEC is on that very significant upward trend, because they are in charge of themselves now and really have that autonomy, which is great. Also, talking about student services, it's amazing that they manage 575 IEPs throughout the district and 154 Section 504 plans. So let's talk a little bit about the challenges that we're going to face in this coming year. And I've actually already started to face them. And several of you remember Tom Stringer, the former Director of Business Affairs. And one of Tom's sayings that I'm very fond of is, we got to keep on keeping on. And when you think about the success that Northfield Schools and our communities have had academically, socially, emotionally, and co-curricularly, maintaining that performance, continuing to do well, is a challenge. Because we have to keep doing all the things that we've been doing well before and do better at a number of other things. So the background of this is that the most dangerous phrase in the English language is that we've always done it this way. And that's a piece that our leadership team continues to challenge, because just because we've done something the same way for a period of time, doesn't mean that it continues to be the right way to do it. However, when you have been successful, asking people to change a particular piece that has been perceived as successful, or maybe has been successful for a while but needs to change, that is always a challenge. And so probably, our top challenge is always going to be, how can we maintain that performance that has brought us recognition as one of the most outstanding school systems in Minnesota, while continuing to get better at the things that we have to get better at? Implementing social-emotional learning curriculum this year, of course, is a piece that's a focus for us. So while it's challenging, it's also an excitement. And this is, the challenge just comes from doing the things that we have not done before in this very intentional way for the first time. So how the lessons are best delivered, how we're able to assess, how we're able to implement all the components, not just within the classroom, but school-wide. And so we're very thrilled with the social-emotional learning implementation that we have, and we're very excited for it. But it's also going to be some work. And we really thank our classroom teachers and our behavior, our instructional coaches for behavior, who are really helping at the elementary with that. And of course, then we're really thrilled for the Hazelden Training for about 26 high school students who are going to serve in the Evidence-Based Peer Helpers Program. And we're really thrilled about that. This may be the single biggest challenge every school district is going to face, recruiting and retaining high-quality staff, because they make the difference. It's the staff who are working directly with kids every day who make or break us. And we have been very fortunate to have a very high-quality staff. Some of you have heard me say this, but I talked to the Minnesota Department of Education this summer, when I was doing some research on the teacher shortage. And what the data that they showed me is that there are nearly 1,000 less applications for new teaching licenses in 2016 when compared to 2007. That's a 17% decrease. So I'm going to say that again. Almost 1,000 less applications for new teaching licenses in 2016 compared to 2007, a 17% decrease. At the same time that we are seeing the baby-womer generation retire, this is not a good situation for a lot of school districts to be. We have been fortunate, because of our location and our reputation, to still have very good pools. I talked to a superintendent this summer who had a fifth-grade position, zero applications. When I was an elementary principal, I would get 400 applications for one elementary position. It is a crisis in outstate Minnesota, and that crisis is coming its way. So one of our challenges is going to be, how do we make ourselves, in a strategic way, a place where people, this is going to become a buyer's market, where people who are going into the teaching field are going to be able to pick. And they're going to look at things like unassigned fund balance, because that means how many years before a district has to reduce its budget? How off, how long is it going to be before I may have to consider that the district might have to reduce the force and potentially lose my job? What kind of facilities am I going to have to be able to teach in? What's the schedule? What are all of those different kinds of pieces? People who are pursuing teaching degrees and teaching positions are going to be in the driver's seat for those things. And school districts that don't change that mindset from "you need to come to me" to "I need to come to you," are going to be hurting very quickly. So it's a big challenge that we are facing. I'm very pleased where we're at. I think our recent contract settlement really puts us in a good driver's seat for that. I think the bond and levy election in November, should they be successful, I think an impact of that will be that will put us in a very good position to recruit and retain as well, as well. Excuse me. I get fired up, you know. Another challenge is our access to early learning. As you heard in the presentation prior to this, the fact is that we have every seat full. And yet, we know that early childhood education, this is not up for debate anymore. We know that access to early childhood education is something that can stop the achievement gap before it begins. I'd like to quote Art Rolnik. He's the former Vice President of the Minneapolis Federal Reserve. And we use the conservative estimate, which is, every dollar that we spend on early childhood education yields a $7 return on investment. We've started to see numbers from some analysts that say that return is now $1 spent to more than $10 returned. We're not quite comfortable yet. We've not seen those pieces replicated. But Art Rolnik's "every dollar spent for $7 return on the investment." And that's when you think about, what kind of additional services do those students need, maybe in special education or other social services that they might need? He looks at it more holistically than just school, more societally. But we need to address the opportunity gap before it begins. This picture, this was a really awesome event. This is the mother, the preschool Mother Goose Curriculum Distribution Night. And Northfield Promise and Community Services put together a piece where a number, I think, as many preschools or daycare, excuse me, daycares, home daycares in the community could get access to this Mother Goose curriculum, which is a, an evidence-based preschool, daycare, preschool, early learning curriculum. which is an evidence-based daycare preschool early learning curriculum for a significantly reduced rate. And the room was packed, and it wasn't just because they were serving Ruth's desserts, you know. They were coming because they had this access to this really great curriculum. And talking to the people there, they were so thrilled that they finally had something that they could use that they knew were going to help their home daycare students be prepared for school. November 7th, coming up, first Tuesday in November, we have a little bit of an election that day, as you may or may not know. As you know, we have both an operating levy and a bond referendum election that day. And our challenge there is just making sure that we continue to inform the public. And of course, we have the curse of knowledge, because we've been talking about these issues for several years. We've invited people through the Master Facilities Planning Process and through the Strategic Planning Process to dozens of meetings, but there are still folks who are just learning about it now. And so our challenge, even though we've been down this road for quite some time, our challenge is making sure that we continue to reach out to people, and when people are first learning about it, that we are able to give them the information, just as we would have six months ago or a year ago, when we had already been thinking about those things. So just making sure that people are informed and go to the polls on November 7th. I don't care what year it is, that's a challenge, but I think the fact is, we just want to make sure that we are doing all the things that we need to, to make November 7th a successful administration of the election, if that makes sense. So reading, we know that reading, that old statement that reading is fundamental, that was a commercial, I think, from the 1970s or 80s, and there's nothing that could be more true. And so a challenge, you'll notice that reading is so important this year, we have two of the challenges. First of all, increasing the number of students identified as proficient in reading by the end of grade three. We know that that's a watershed moment, and we know that tons of research says that students who read proficiently by the end of grade three have a significant chance to be very successful as they continue on in their academic career. And if you're not reading at proficiency by grade three, while it's not game over, it becomes more difficult to catch those students up. So we really are looking at that grade three as an important benchmark in terms of how we're doing, in terms of making sure kids are able to read at grade level. And this year, our challenge is finalizing the K-5 reading curriculum adoption. Our literacy team with about 30 teachers has done a lot of work since last January. They've already reviewed several curriculum options, they're ready to finalize the recommendation this fall. Then we have to get into the other pieces that go along. It's not just about purchasing curriculum, it's about making sure that there's a strong plan for training and professional development, as well as making sure that the assessments that we're using are in line with, again, leading toward giving us data that helps us make sure kids are proficient by the end of grade three. And so our goal is to have those curriculum changes ready to go, and that will lead to a higher proficiency level for our students at the end of grade three. It is, I think we would all agree, that Northfield is a community that wants to lift everyone up. We want everyone to enjoy the success that so many of our students do. But when we look at the opportunity gaps between students of means and between students of lower socioeconomic means, we know that that opportunity gap is unacceptable, and we need to make sure that we continue to relentlessly pursue solutions to make sure that no matter what your income level in our school system, that you have an opportunity to perform at the same level as anyone else. And so we have to not just reduce, we have to eliminate the opportunity gap. This isn't a one-year thing. It's not something we can do by ourselves, but we can take the lead on it, and we have through Northfield Promise and some other things. We are looking for that breakthrough. And you see with the reading and the social-emotional learning, those are things that we believe can help us get to that breakthrough status. But it is unacceptable in our community to have the opportunity gaps that are present in our academic data, and we will not rest until they're gone. One of the things that we love about our school system is that we provide a breadth of academic course and program choice. And our challenge is making sure that we can continue to provide that choice while maintaining reasonable class sizes. And so that's something that I had as a challenge last year, turned up as one of the near-term priorities and is a discussion that we're going to be having throughout the year this year. We addressed many issues last year, and our strategic plan, class size was not one that we got to necessarily have a conversation about. You did several things to help address class size. You authorized an additional section of fifth grade at Sibley Elementary last year. Mid-year, you gave us some additional contingency money to reduce some class size at the high school. And then we revamped how we handled contingency, you gave us some extra FT. And to start this year, and we're not having as many of those concerns, but again, the size of district that we are, the amount of great choice that we have, it does have an impact on how our class sizes come out. And so that is a challenge that we continue to face. We're very proud to offer that breadth of academic choice, but in some cases, there is an equal and opposite reaction in some other parts of the district, and just making sure that we all understand how that comes out in the wash, we think, is really important. We want to continue to make sure that we work on customized learning, and especially looking at, how can we make sure that we provide timely feedback and academic choice through tight integration of technology within the district's teaching? And this picture here is from, it's not that many see a lot of technology as part of it, but this is one of the senior presentation days last year, where students had basically a passion project that they could do a research on, and it's... Every student, at the end of their senior year, gets to pick a problem that they want to talk about and research and analyze and make recommendations. There's not a better customized learning piece than that. It's giving students who really are looking toward the end, right? And yet, if you went through the presentations that day, a lot, most of them were very impressive, very well thought out, very well contrived, and we are getting that work out of seniors who could see the graduation ending. And I think that that's really a testament to how we're looking at, how can we customize learning? Because when we customize learning to students' passion, we immediately get engagement, which is so important. And continuing to look at, how can we modify things like embedded assessment and some of those kinds of things? One thing I'm very excited that we'll be sharing with you this year, part of the reading curriculum change, is we are using some personalized learning software. So one is called Imagine Learning, another is called Reading Plus, and there's one more that I'm... The name escapes me right now, where students in reading will have some direct time where they're able to work with materials at their own instructional level, at least 25 minutes over each day for four of the five days per week. Some of the pilots that we did last year were pretty impressive, and you're going to see some of those results in the middle school SIP plan. So again, customized learning means a lot of different things. It means giving students academic voice and choice. It also means providing content at their individual instructional level, and as well as making sure that there are multiple ways for students to show what they know, so that we have this variety of ways to assess what they're doing. We continue to want to make sure that our professional learning communities have a chance to evolve. We're looking at, how can we help them create innovative pedagogy? And we are looking at those modified goal-setting structures that we've mentioned to you in the past, in terms of trying to look for shorter feedback loops, so where there may not be a full year... There might be a full year goal, but several other shorter goals for folks to be able to gauge their progress, and like we like to say, fail more quickly, so we can find out what doesn't work on the route to finding what does work. We want to take the Northfield Forward Committee, I like to say this in the land of Prince, the committee formerly known as DPAC, right? And take that restructuring that we did in terms of a little bit of a leaner approach, really looking at celebrating some bright spots, and also, again, just looking at how we can continue to move the district forward, and the successful transition to the new strategy is a challenge that we'll face this year. I feel we're, of course, going to be able to meet it, but the fact is that it is something that is going to be different, and so therefore, we're paying attention to it. Another piece that's really important is continuing to impact the perceptions about post-secondary experiences. A week doesn't go by that I don't have a conversation with someone about this. And this is not a student problem in our community, this is us, this is an adult problem, in the fact that many students feel significant pressure to conform to what some folks might think of the, you know, the highly selective four-year college, or that there's only one way to be successful after high school, and that's having a four-year degree. Now, a four-year degree is outstanding. It's, of course, great for lots and lots of people, but it's not the only way. And I know from experience and talking to students in our building, that there's a lot of pressure on them, and they may not be ready, or they may not want that four-year degree approach right away, and it's imperative that we continue to change the mindset of the adults in the community to say that all career and college pathways are supported. So if a student wants to pursue a technical career right out of high school, we say, "Great, how can we support you?" We have a student who wants to go on the Northfield Rotary Exchange Program, which we've supported for years. "Great, how can we support you?" We have a student who wants to do a volunteer experience in a gap year kind of thing. "Great, how do we support you?" "I want to join the military." "Wonderful, how do we support you?" Without passing judgment. And I don't believe that anyone does this intentionally, but it is true, and it is not good for our kids, and it has to change. And so we need to continue, as a school board and as the adults in the school district, we have to continue supporting kids and say, "What is your dream?" Not "What are the adults' dreams?", "What is your dream, and how can we support you getting there?" And I will continue to work tirelessly to do that, and I hope that you will join me in making sure that when you have those opportunities for conversations, that you can say, you know, "There's more than one way to have a successful career after high school, and it involves a number of different things." And so I hope that you'll join me in making sure that we can... I don't have a measurement tool for that quite yet, or working on it. And finally, one of the challenges that we'll face is the strategic plan. You say, "Matt, you talk about the strategic plan all the time." In fact, "I'm sick of you talking about the strategic plan." Well, we're almost halfway there. I've used that joke now a couple of times, I've got to stop using it. But the point is, we worked so hard last year on the strategic plan, and a danger of the strategic plan is that after you've had it for a short amount of time, people can start to wander. And so there's that happy medium that we have to continue to look at, which is one, staying true to the work, which is not succumbing to what that great movie Up said, squirrel, right? We have to avoid those squirrel moments and say, "Oh, this new shiny thing has come in." Nope, the strategic plan has set our direction for the next several years, and we need to avoid those shiny distractions and keep forward on the plan that we've set. While at the same time, we can't be so rigid with it that we do not entertain minor modifications that could help us reach the vision. Might be a minor modification, it's part of our ongoing or near-term priorities, but so that's the challenge of the strategic plan after year one, is how do we make sure we continue progress on it, not allowing ourselves to be deterred by other things that are coming up, because you could do something new every year, right? We have set what our strategic goal is, and we have to keep going after it. But that's a challenge for us this year, and I ask you to hold us accountable. How does this affect our strategic plan? And we will continue to review it, we'll continue to give you those kinds of reports, as this is really kind of a report, you'll notice a lot of things in here go to the near-term and ongoing priorities, right? So I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this with you. It is one of my favorite things to do each year, to share this with you, because we have a lot of great things happening in the system, we have a lot of opportunities. I'm going to change that to celebrations and opportunities next year, if that's okay. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any discussion that board members might be interested in at this time.
Excellent, thank you. Questions, comments? Edelman.
So I have a different suggestion. Instead of challenges, you could say, "What's next?"
I love it, yes, even better, very good. I'm writing that down.
I... We all appreciate this report, and it's always, every year, there's things that you forget because so much has been tackled. So it's really nice to have it on one sheet. So my question, you know, has to do with the what's next or the challenges. I wasn't one of the ones who got lucky to go to the continuous improvement site visit, and I know there were two different groups that went, and the second one included board members. So you did a really nice job, Dr. Helman, of sort of synthesizing, oh, we've got social-emotional, we've got these reading pieces, taking the 13 and kind of giving us that. But what I can't connect with is I know that there was some interest in that continuous improvement, and that we were very close in Northfield, but there was more of a subtle cultural shift. So I don't know how this connects to that, and I'd be really curious if you've got some observations.
I think that there are two pieces that would connect. If you look at number 10 and number 11 on the what's next 2017-18, I like that, that's very good. In fact, Director of Teaching Larry Meyer Hansen and District Coordinator of Assessment, Hope Langston, and I met today, and we have identified some PLCs in the district that we are reaching out to, to adopt the shorter feedback loops. We had that as a piece we thought about last year, we were really kind of starting to look at it, and then when we went to Menominee Falls, it became very clear that that's a strategy that can work very well. And our goal is to identify several, at least one in each building, PLCs that would have a modified way of goal-setting. They would also be given a little bit more freedom with that PLC time, and then they would be following an alternate evidence-of-practice reporting system. Where rather than having the two, the mid-year and the end of the year, that's a little bit more detailed, they would have a very basic reflection tool that we would ask them to complete as a PLC at the end of each quarter. So that goes to about that nine-week feedback loop piece. And our goal is that if by identifying pilot PLCs to do that this year, that they can see that success, they can then, hopefully in the winter, present to Northfield Forward, right? Then present the results to their own buildings with an intent of, as we continue to move forward, that every PLC where it makes sense would operate in that way. But what we think it's in... What we learned from the Menominee Falls trip too is that, remember that they were in year seven or eight when we went there, and they said they really didn't even see, starting to see some breakthroughs until year three or so. But we think this is the logical next step in terms of that part of the continuous improvement journey.
Great, thank you. Excellent question. Other questions or comments? Board members have... Rob?
So with the... On the challenges of the opportunity gap, when the state disaggregates the data, you have it by white, black, Hispanic, English-language learner, free and reduced-price lunch, et cetera, do we look at... Do we do that, for example, the Torch Program, students who participated in that, or students who have participated in Ninth Grade Academy, to see how those interventions are working on the opportunity gap?
I'm going to give you what my sense is, is that my sense is that internally, we are looking at that but not reporting it officially. We're going to have Hope come to talk to you in one of the next couple of meetings about the district's results overall, because we think that that's important. You hear those results every year. We continue to disaggregate more data than we ever have in the past, because we think it's important to show our areas for strength, or our areas for opportunity for growth, as well as of our areas for strength. So I believe that they have done so in Torch and the Ninth Grade Academy, taking a look at that. But remember, the Ninth Grade Academy is really more about credit completion, you know, in terms of that piece now. And again, when you get to the high school building, you're not being assessed each year in terms of that. I think that Torch has, again, looked more so at that graduation rate, in terms of, and what are those things that they need to do to get there? I do not know if they have not done that internal... I am sure that that has happened, at least at a, maybe not, maybe at an informal level, but I don't disagree that that's the next step to make sure how are we... What we do know is that, you know, kids who are graduating and enrolling in college from the Torch Program, that's been a significant success, and we know that what we've seen in terms of the number of ninth-grade students who have failed one course or more has dropped astronomically since they started the Ninth Grade Academy system. And those were the initial measurements that they were looking at, because, of course, those measurements were things that research told us were, if you hit that bowling pin, a bunch of others go down with them as well.
And then a totally unrelated question. One of the celebrations was the Farm to School, and I was just reading recently about, you know, there were the... All the things implemented during the Obama administration, now the current administration has reversed some of them, like sodium levels and things like that, and same thing happened with the Office of Civil Rights guidance. It seems like we're just continuing on the same trajectory, that we haven't made significant changes. So I'm just wondering, do you see that as a potential challenge, or just something where we're going to continue doing what we've been doing?
Well, I think the key thing is, there's a lot of misunderstanding of what the current administration, especially on the school nutrition side, has done or hasn't done. And one of the key things, for example, Rob, you mentioned the salt content. I think it's really important for folks to know that there's been no change, there's been no rollback in the salt content requirements. What they did is delayed, there was another step that was supposed to happen, I think it was next school year, that was going to reduce the salt content even further. They didn't roll anything back that's currently in effect. What they did is delayed the implementation of the next step. So I think that the key thing is that in these particular, in this particular case, when it comes to the school nutrition component, we do know that the Secretary of Agriculture, of course, who is in charge of the school nutrition... of course, who is in charge of the school nutrition program, did speak to the National School Nutrition, their association, I'm not exactly sure what the name of it is. And there's some disagreement, even among that group at a national level, about what the right spot for federal regulation of school lunch programs are. Of course, reasonable people can disagree, but we are continuing on the path of the policies and the procedures that we have set forward until we are told otherwise. And of course, we can always exceed federal standards in a positive way, right? So if that time were to come, we could certainly have discussion about what's the right thing to do for Northfield. To this point, we have avoided a lot of the controversy, the number of other schools. Because you remember, we've been implementing this stuff for a long time. Because remember, the Obama administration didn't, they phased a lot of those things in. So we were actually adopting rules that weren't required to be implemented much earlier than some other places. And so we had that more gradual buildup. There are some issues that still are associated with some of the national pieces, such as the wellness policy that we discussed last spring, and some of the changes that are happening to traditions within schools across the state, when we were required to adopt a wellness policy. That will certainly continue to be a challenge. But our child nutrition department partnering with Northfield Promise has done a great job, I think, in terms of explaining to parents those changes. And we've already had a few questions on that already. And I think that Stephanie Strummy and her team have done just an outstanding job of responding to those questions.
Thanks, Rob. Other questions?
I never thought I'd be talking about salt content during that.
That's a great question. Noel?
Dr. Hillman, thank you for the timely and informative update. What is most notable to me, I think, is the successes that we have that are, in some ways, so unrelated. National merit achievements, Teacher of the Year, Minnesota School Financial Award for Financial Management, Three Dozen Businesses, participating in the annual business and technical, I think the impact of Greenville School as a community school, you know, four thousand, four hundred, I'm sorry, 40,000 participants, community assistance. And so the community denominator seems to be recognizing the opportunity. And then pursuing, and setting the vision and pursuing with persistence and hard work to all the people, I think. Thank you. Dr. Hillman, for your leadership.
Well, thanks, Noel. I really appreciate that. And you're right, our people really do look for opportunities. They do look for what's next. And they look at, what's the problem that might be standing in front of us? How can we implement changes that will affect the problem? And how can we measure things that matter in moving towards success? And so I think that we have a lot of good things going on, and there's more great things that we have a chance to do.
Excellent, thank you. Amy?
I was just wondering, looking at all the things that we have to be proud of, and we're a small group here, how do we get all this information out to the community? Because I think the community should know this, and they would feel the same pride we feel for all of our staff and everything that's happened here. So what are your ideas that way?
So there's a couple of pieces. In our regular year, I present this at the Chamber of Commerce meeting in September. I'll be doing an abbreviated version of this, because I'm gonna be sharing the plan for the referendum with the Chamber of Commerce on the 20th. What we will also do is, you have these documents that are important for you to be able to have, so when people ask you questions, you have those things in front of you. Bruce Dippick is recording the presentation here tonight, and so we will cut, as we did last year, we'll chop out the part of the board video that has this presentation. We'll post that specifically on the website, on the superintendent's blog, and also in other locations for people to be able to find it. And then, of course, we'll include it in our own district staff newsletter, because with 600 employees, making sure that all of our staff know the good things that are happening are important as well. So I think that anything that you can do to share that with your friends and neighbors and point them toward the website, once we post the video, that would be great.
I'd like to add a suggestion to that.
Yes.
Would it be possible to put together a points of pride page, and maybe have, when the newsletters go out to the parents, have each of the principals attach a points of pride? So it gets pushed out, instead of expecting people to visit the website and find it?
That's a great idea.
And then, if there's some way, we could also share it with community members that are not directly in contact with the schools, that would be great, too.
Well, there's a couple of things there. One, when we do thought exchange, if you remember, if you've seen the school newsletters, they will often include in the school newsletter, answers to questions that have come up in thought exchange. This would be a natural extension of that. We could certainly have done this data, and they can include it in there. And then, I'm going to say something that Erin is, look at me, I'm gonna, we're looking, we're exploring an option of including in the community services brochure, some additional district information. You know, so rather than it just being a district community services brochure, we're investigating, could we include two or three pages in each one about the district? This would be a very logical article to put in with that. It's a piece that we're looking, that while we know we don't need to go back to the full born print piece for everyone, the community services brochure is something that goes out to every taxpayer or every home in the entire district. And by, we can very cost effectively add just a couple of pages to that community services brochure. So we actually only talked about that this morning. So we're investigating the possibility. Pardon me, yeah, we're investigating, but that would be another way we could share it.
Something like that. I think parents and community members would be interested in enrollment numbers, and statistics, and points of pride, and that sort of thing would be, I think, get people, more people opening the community services brochure, so it would be helpful all around.
Yeah, and increase that number of 121,000 people who are participating. That's always good. Thank you.
Excellent. Rob?
I just thought of another thing. Thinking back to the Northfield Grad Summit, there was a section where people came up with ideas for new initiatives, and they were voted on, and asked, you know, which ones do you think should be funded? Was there a follow-up on that? Did anything happen with that? Do we know, or is that something that you need to investigate?
We'll have to get the information for you on that, Rob. Do you know that, Erin?
I don't know that, Erin. I know what you're talking about, Rob, and I'm not sure if that's housed with the two chairs of that action team, or if it's housed at HCI, but I think we could get you that information and get it back to you.
Good question, thank you.
Margaret?
I won't go on forever, but ditto what Noel Stratmon said. I couldn't have said it better. And I'm thinking with the upcoming referendum, if, when folks know that their money in Northfield school districts is an investment, that has made excellent return, and that it has been handled with care by this administration, handled with extreme care and responsibility. I think when people see this, they can say, this has my tax dollars at work, truly at work, and they're being well cared for. So I think that's a big point to make in the community.
And when you see the presentation that we're giving, you'll see that very clearly we articulate that, we're very proud of the fact that we, of, I think it's 495 total entities, that would include school districts and charter schools, we are number 15 in the state for the highest percentage, the percentage of our general fund that goes directly to classroom instruction and student support services. So that, I think, puts an exclamation point on your statement.
Thank you. Okay, any final questions or comments? Well, thank you. And again, I appreciate Noel's opportunity that he took to kind of recap it for everyone, and we absolutely echo what Noel said. So thank you for those comments, Noel. Thank you, Dr. Hillman.
Thank you. This is fun.
Good stuff, for sure. Okay, so we will just wait for a moment for Dr. Hillman to return to the table. We'll go on, move on to item for individual action. Prior to a motion, there are just a couple of things that Dr. Hillman would like to briefly discuss, one being the additional sheet that was given to us in the table file with some additional information on the Northfield Middle School school improvement plan. So we'll have Dr. Hillman present that, and any other overall comments regarding the site improvement plan, and then we'll look for a motion to approve those.
Yes, so you recall, back in July, because first of all, we have to be thrilled to be acting on the school improvement plans on September 11th, which is just wonderful. And so I hope that you have found the new templates and the new approach efficient, yet still effective at giving you the information about the school improvement plans that you need. In the table file, it did include one thing that we learned this summer, is that the middle school had used MCA scores as part of their goals for 2016-17. And at the July meeting, when we were, they were doing their report, of course, those results were, while we had them, they were embargoed, and we were not allowed to disclose those until later in July. So you now have the updated report that has their results on those first two goals. And if you recall, Principal Greg Jellino said, I think you're gonna find some happiness in our data. And so if you take a look at their first goal, it said, Northfield Middle School will have an increase of 5% of all students in grades six, seventh, and eighth grade, who show a positive growth on their state MCA reading and math test during the 2016-17 school year. And if you look at the data at the right, they achieved that in five of six data points. And if one rounds, you could say they made it in six of six data points. So that is a pretty, in fact, in many cases, they, as you see, in four of those cases, they actually doubled that 5%. So there's some really great things that happened at the middle school, especially with their multi-tiered systems of support that they are using with students, that really accounted for that increase in that growth score. Proficiency is important, but doesn't tell the entire story, and that growth score is very important. You'll also notice that their goal was to decrease the achievement gap within their free and reduced lunch population students by 10% in reading and mathematics. And while they made that 10, that stretch goal of 10% in one year, which is a stretch goal, in two of the six data points, they did reduce the gap in four of six data points. And so before we ask you to approve the, all the school improvement plans, I thank Dr. Iverson for pointing this out today, that we had not been able to circle back to this. So I was very happy to get that, so we could include this, and so we can be proud of what the middle school did. That's some pretty impressive performance that they had on those two goals. And I'm sad that they weren't able to report them during their regular presentation, but there's gonna be some, you're gonna crack a few eggs when you're doing something new with a school improvement. And if that's the worst that we did, we're in good shape. So I'm very pleased with the middle school, and thrilled with all of the school improvement plan reports this year. Again, they were lean and efficient, focused on less things necessarily in the past, but our hope is by helping them narrow that focus, they're going to have bigger outcomes. So with that, I will be quiet and allow us to take the next piece here.
Excellent. So this is an item for individual actions. So is there a motion to approve the seven site improvement plans submitted by building or program staff for the 2017-18 school year? So moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Margaret. Questions, comments board members have regarding the site improvement plans?
I just want, you touched on it already, but I would, could not be more thrilled with the process. I could not be more thrilled that we're sitting here on September 11th approving this, rather than, you know, just the pushing up the timeline for, it's just been incredibly effective, I think, for all of us to really feel like we're very cognizant of what the challenges are, and what the successes are, and as we really are at the very beginning of the 17-18 school year. So just excellent. I think the way the administrators streamlined the presentation gave us a really good, top level, understanding of where things were. And again, us being able to dialogue with the community about each and every of our sites has just been really impressive. And I think last and most importantly is, how we saw each of those improvement plans being very carefully aligned to the strategic plan. And how, when we really think about a year ago, we hadn't even had that plan approved yet, when we were sitting here in September. And now we're here with site improvement plans that absolutely follow and are carefully aligned with the strategic plan. So it's just a really great overall success story, I think, and one you can add next year in terms of that we really got all of the site improvement plans. And of course, lastly, we have to thank, with the accelerated timeline, and we know the number of people that have input in the site improvement plan, so all of those people, many of them will work through the summer to have that done, and really the valuable insight and input they give to really creating those documents. So just really, opportunity to thank everyone who had a part in the site improvement plans.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the 2017-18 school year site improvement plans here today on September 11th, which is exciting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will move on to approval of the consent grouping. There were a few personnel items in the table file that were added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Rob. Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two items for information. One, the enrollment report for September of 2017, as a reminder, was in the table file. Dr. Hillman?
So we have the initial enrollment report, and you'll see that we are at the end of September 8th, which is the end of the first week, at 3,960 and one-half students, and of course, dealing with the full-time students, excluding early childhood and the part-time ALC folks. You'll remember that we amended the way that we do the enrollment report last year to give you a little bit more clearer of a picture. And just for comparative purposes, we ended last year with a number of 39, 39 and a half. So just about a 20, a little bit more than 20 student change at the beginning of this year. If I were you, I would ask, why did we have 3,997 on September 5th, the first day of school, and did all those kids leave in the first week? And the answer is, of course, we don't always, we aren't always able to predict who has left until kids show up on the first day. And so what you'll, what we know is that we have students who are in the database who we assumed were coming back, who ended up doing something different, and we don't always, well, we find out what they're all doing at some point. But the fact is, there's a lot of data cleanup that happens in that first week of families that moved but forgot to tell us, or maybe aren't registering at their new school until later. But still, we're starting the year about 20, well, not about 21 students more than what we started, or ended last year with. So that's the first enrollment report, and we look forward to giving you several more through the year.
Questions or comments? Rob?
I'm just wondering, with class sizes for elementary grades, whether, if someone gets a really big class one year, they get a break the next year? I mean, is there an attempt to kind of even things out over time?
You know, Rob, that really depends. And the reason I say that it depends is that our approach is trying to be proactive in terms of making sure that we are not having class sizes that are problematic in that way. But it's possible, you know, that a grade level could be, have a couple of years in a row where they're at the higher end of what we would like, but aren't high enough, you know, to where we would add a section, if that makes sense. So I do think from time to time, there's some grade level movement of staff, you know, that could do that, though that doesn't happen as often. So there's not necessarily an intentional effort to make that happen. There are some times that just good fortune makes it happen. However, I just, I can't tell you that, yes, we'll give someone a break the next year, because it unfortunately just doesn't work like, if I could, all the new students who come, if I could say, well, yes, you're 13, but I really need a second grader this year. You know, I'd love to have them come equitably across all the classes, but unfortunately that does not work. We've not figured out how to make that happen yet. So it's just, it depends upon the numbers in each grade level, as opposed to what we do to give people a proper break.
I was just wondering, because like in Greenville Park kindergarten, there's one class that's half the size of the other three classes. And I'm just wondering, was there, is there a reason that it wasn't more equitively distributed?
And there is. And that class that you see is our Spanish-speaking kindergarten class. So if you remember, at Greenville Park, we have a district-wide program where all of our Spanish-speaking kindergartners congregate in one particular section for the purpose of language acquisition. And that grade, that particular section has varied over the years. I will tell you that in the records that we reviewed, this is the smallest that we've had it. It has, we've had another year where there were 14. However, what we, what we know is that the results that we've had from that approach have been very positive, but it is a piece that we're trying to look forward, to see it, are there some evaluating, is that approach still the best approach moving forward, but wanting to do that earlier than, say, over the summer? So I know that we're taking a look at that approach at kindergarten. Are there other ways that we can service our first language Spanish students in a different way? But in this particular case, this year, the kindergarten structure was such that we had lesser numbers of kids whose first language was Spanish, and needed that, and qualified, there's a test that they have to take to qualify for that particular section. So there are 12 students who qualified for that at this point this year. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I was quickly doing the math in my head, and it doesn't seem, I was trying to figure out where the, where we lost the 36 and a half students, and it wasn't clear from there. So I'm just wondering what I might be missing.
So help me understand, Amy, in terms of, you're talking about the 36 and a half students from day one?
To day four. Yeah, so.
So I'm going to look at the, at the, that first page, and if you look at it, you're going to see that you lost.
Three from early childhood.
Well, early childhood members is not part of that one. So it appears that it was one student at Greenville Park. It looks like there were a few students at Sibley, a number at the middle school, a high school went down several, and then it also, the.
That was balanced out by ALC. I don't see 30 different.
Well, we'll go back and double check it as to where it's at, but those are the numbers we had today. So we'll go back and take a look and see where we're missing it, but, and so we'll present you with an amended enrollment report. Because I see what you're saying, when you just eyeball the top piece and you look at the final number, you're saying, okay, where did that come from? So I'm going to have to take, and that number could be, I'm not going to, I'm not going to guess at it, I'm going to find out for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? So next item for information is the referendum update. Dr. Hillman?
Yes. So just want to, we want to end every meeting here, just giving you an update on where we're at with the referendum process. And so just want to remind folks that we have our two community information presentations. While I think I'm scheduled to give about 20 presentations at various groups already, the two that we're advertising to the entire public, of course, it was in the Northfield News already a couple of times, has been sent out to all parents. September 18th, so one week from tonight, 7 o'clock in the high school auditorium. And then again, on Monday, October 16th, again, 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium, we'll give the referendum presentation and allow for questions and answers during that time period. So of course, board members are invited to attend that. The levy guide, I believe, went to the printer today. So after about a month of working on it and relooking at it and looking at it a number of times, our goal had always been to have that dropped in people's homes around the week where absentee ballot, balloting can start on September 22nd. So right now, we're anticipating that the printer will get it to the post office on September 18th, a week from today, and then it should arrive in people's homes sometime that week, is what we understand. So the levy guide will go out. It's, I think, a very detailed, and it has enough information and directs people to the website for additional information. We'll also be posting that on the website this week, so the PDF will be out there even a little bit earlier. We also have, I mentioned, we've got probably about 20, we have three other scheduled presentations this week. So I'm presenting to both the Greenville Park and the Sibley PTO this week, as well as the Northfield Rotary Club on Thursday. And I mentioned a week from this Wednesday, we're presenting to the Northfield Chamber of Commerce Fall Meeting. And then there's a ton of other things that are coming up. We'll try to keep you informed of those as we go forward. And then also note that just after we send out the levy guide, the next two, the two required mailings that we have are the notification of the combined polling places, because we are doing some combined polling places for our rural precincts by law. We need to notify people who are affected by a combined polling place. It has to be at least 25 days before the election, so we're planning to send that out right around October 1st. And then we're also required to send what's called the Notice of Special Election. That includes a sample ballot, includes, I believe, includes, again, the polling places, and there's a letter from me, and that goes to all taxpayers within the district. And that is one where it cannot go out more than 30 days before the election, but no less than 15 days. So the first day that you're allowed to mail that by law is October 9th, and we'll be mailing that on October 9th. So those two required pieces of the election preparation are planned and scheduled. I'd like to thank Erin Bailey and Danita Delzer for their incredibly hard work. Danita's doing a tremendous amount of work with the counties to make sure that we're prepared for the election, and Erin is handling all of the materials that are getting printed and those kinds of things. So just really need to give kudos to Danita for her great work and to Erin, and of course, Val Merstorf doing all of the finance piece behind the scenes, and also in her role as deputy clerk, getting ready for election night. So a lot of things, less than two months from now, that our election day happens, and so things really gearing up, but the plan has been there all along. We've been addressing things as they go. And so while every, so often, we have a moment of panic in terms of making sure we have every, every time we check our schedule and our checklist, we're saying, all right, we're right on schedule. So that is where we're at with the referendum. And again, continuing just to make sure that we're providing community, the community with the information they need to make an informed decision on November 7th.
Amy?
Two things. First, I figured out my problem with the math, and it's me.
Okay.
So it's nothing that you did. I was looking at the wrong line, and the difference between, the last line excludes the ELC, the part-time.
That's what I thought it was, but I don't want to speculate.
And so, so I take back that question.
I can cross something off my list. That makes me happy.
Exactly. But then I do have a question about the referendum, and I'm just curious, how, where you get the mailing addresses from and how that's chosen?
So we are able to request files from the county auditors for these pieces and also the Secretary of State. So we are able to go to the Secretary of State to ask for the voter registration piece for the entities that were combined, the polling places. And then we're also able to get, for example, for the special notice election, the counties are able to provide us with the, we have to pay for them, but they provide us with a list of the taxpayers within the system.
Thank you. Excellent. Any other referendum update question? Okay. So that's all of our items for information. Future meetings, Monday, September 25th and Monday, October 9th, both at 7:00 PM in the High School Media Center. With that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Dan.[1792.51]